I'm now called October 7, 2018, Blue Springs City Council meeting in order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you into the place of your seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have seated. Want to welcome you in the audience, as well as those that might watch the YouTube later. Next we have a consent agenda. Councilmember Fowler asked to pull item C unless there are other items need to be pulled, except a motion for approval.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Colpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilman Fowler, item C.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a contract, actually for the Homes Association, I think, so that they can get ornamental streetlights, and I think this is great. I think I really like when subdivisions do try and improve themselves and probably help maintain their property values by investing in their light poles. This contract goes for 20 years, I think, to 2039, I think I saw that in the writing. But I will tell you that over time subdivisions or home associations, they look at that, and they wonder if they're ever going to get these paid off. And so, I don't know if every agreement has a payoff date, or if it's just perpetual that they will have to do this from now on. And I guess I'm curious if it's consistent across all agreements, going back to the earliest ones that we have.
You want to just defer to Mr. Sandy? Mr. Sandy?
Yes, he's had the most experience with the...
Councilmember, going back to the very old style, they are a little bit different because the developer actually purchased their own lights and installed them, and paid their own electric bills on those lights. The new version, they actually have KCPNL decorative lights, and there is no payoff because it is just a pass-through cost through, from KCPNL to the city, to the HOA. So, the decorative lights are $403 apiece per year. The city standard light is $265 per year. They pay the upcharge between the two.
And that money over the years helps go to replace that pole if it would get aged or knocked down or something?
Yes, KCPNL does all the maintenance and repair on the lights.
So, that is the ongoing cost, and that's what they're going to continue to get, because 20 years from now, they may replace those poles, and they're going to get whatever the ornamental pole is at that time then, I guess, is that...
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right.
That answered your question.
Yeah, I just want to understand a little bit more, I think, Councilman.
Chris, that same, is like what we have downtown with the decorative lights in downtown, and it's the same type of setup with, other than it's not a HOA, but the city, but isn't that a lease-type deal?
That's correct.
Okay.
One of the subdivisions at the Glen and Waterfield installed their own lights. And so, each October, they submit KCPNL bills showing that they've had active lights throughout the course of the year, and then what we do is we rebate them the cost for the 11 lights that would have been streetlights in their neighborhood. And so, we write them a check for about $2,900. But they front the cost.
Okay.
Unfortunately, KCPNL will no longer work with HOAs because of their volatility, and so they'll only work with cities.
Okay.
So, for those homes association that says, hey, I heard that such and such subdivision had theirs paid off, that's probably not the case. As long as you have ornamental streetlights in Blue Springs, they're probably having to pay for the...
If they were done in the last 12 years, I would say that's correct. The ones previous to that, Hickory Woods, the Glen and Waterfield...
The parks there?
There's like four subdivisions that actually paid off their, they put them in themselves.
Okay, okay.
Anyone else?
Well, that raises a question for me. I know we have had some HOAs dissolve, for whatever reason. So, if that happens, what happens to that contract?
At this point, we're working with an HOA on the south end of town where the HOA dissolved, but they've actually got a new HOA. We're trying to negotiate with them to pick up the costs that they're supposed to. At this current point, the city is footing the bill.
So, if the HOA does not reactivate or a new create, new and create, then the city just leaves those poles in there and stands the difference in the cost?
It would be the recommendation of Public Works that we replace those lights with the city standard and take the decorative lights out.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, accept the motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Any further discussion further? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have the introduction of reading of Bill 4697.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4697, an ordinance approving the final plat for Eagles Ridge Bill as PRO, second plat, lots 44 through 74, and tracks D through E.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4697, an ordinance approving the final plat for Eagles Ridge Bill as PRO, second plat, lots 44 through 74, and tracks D through E.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Colpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4854.
Next, we have introduction of reading of Bill 4698.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4698, an ordinance amending Title III, Schedule III, prohibited parking, certain sections of designated streets, Table 3A, no parking at any time of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to add sections of southwest Marigold Street, southwest Rose Street, southwest Third Street, southwest First Street, southwest Orchard Drive, southwest Imperial Lane, southwest McIntosh Lane, southwest Peachtree Lane, southwest Gala Lane, northwest Fesper Street, and northwest Circle Drive.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4698, an ordinance amending Title III, Section III, prohibited parking, certain sections of designated streets, Table 3A, no parking at any time of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to add sections of southwest Marigold Street, southwest Rose Street, southwest Third Street, southwest First Street, southwest Orchard Drive, southwest Imperial Lane, southwest McIntosh Lane, southwest Peachtree Lane, southwest Gala Lane, northwest Fesper Street, and northwest Circle Drive.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Colpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4855.
Next, we have introduction of reading of Bill Number 4699.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4699, an ordinance of repealing and replacing Title III, Schedule II, Table 2A, speed limits generally of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to set speed limits on certain streets and highways within the city of Blue Springs.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4699, an ordinance repealing and replacing Title III, Schedule II, Table 2A, speed limits generally of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to set speed limits on certain streets and highways within the city of Blue Springs.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Colpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4856.
Introduction of reading of Bill 4700.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4700, an ordinance amending Article V Economic Development Council, Sections 120.210, 120.220, 120.240, and 120.260 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to update the functionality and reporting of the Economic Development Council.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Colpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4856.
Next, we have introduction of reading of Bill Number 4699.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4699, an ordinance amending Title III, Schedule III, prohibited parking, certain sections of designated streets, Table 3A, no parking at any time of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to add sections of southwest Marigold Street, southwest Rose Street, southwest Third Street, southwest First Street, southwest Orchard Drive, southwest Imperial Lane, southwest McIntosh Lane, southwest Peachtree Lane, southwest Gala Lane, northwest Fesper Street, and northwest Circle Drive.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Second reading of Bill Number 4699, an ordinance repealing and replacing Title III, Schedule II, Table 2A, speed limits generally of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to set speed limits on certain streets and highways within the city of Blue Springs.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Your second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Colpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4856.
Introduction of reading of Bill 4700.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4700, an ordinance amending Article V Economic Development Council, Sections 120.210, 120.220, 120.240, and 120.260 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to update the functionality and reporting of the Economic Development Council.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4700, an ordinance amending Article V Economic Development Council, Sections 120.210, 120.220, 120.240, and 120.260 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to update the functionality and reporting of the Economic Development Council.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Colpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4857.
That brings us to a presentation on the Public Works Annual Report, of which you should have a copy at your place. Mr. Sandy?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished councilmembers. It is my honor this evening to present to you the inaugural Public Works Annual Report. This is for 2018. We will be doing our next one for 2019 shortly. This document highlights the department functions and work performed during the fiscal year 2017 and 18. Public Works is comprised of two main groups, the engineering group and the operations group. In the engineering group, it's tasked with overseeing the development and the administration of contracts for the capital improvement program projects. In short, engineering is charged of building cool projects, ensuring developers properly design and install subdivision infrastructure, and they provide inspections of work being done by third parties in a rights-of-way. There are six full-time employees in engineering, four of which are shown here in the picture. One of our big tasks is the CIP projects. In 2017 and 18, we did the CDBG ADA sidewalk at Walker School Park. It was a project total of $136,425. The project provided much-needed ADA compliance around sidewalks around the school and park. The STO 6 program, which was the pavement maintenance program, was actually deferred in 2018 for the Northeast Roanoke Drive project. The department met with property owners and residents in the area and gave input on the projects, and many of their ideas could be incorporated and their concerns addressed. The project is in construction now. The utilities have almost completed the relocation, and the contractor will be starting on the replacement of the box culvert in the next couple of weeks. That's a $2.8 million project. CIP ST 53, which is an exciting project, is putting the signal in at Seven Highway and South Avenue. We did this as a cooperative effort between the City of Blue Springs and the Missouri Department of Transportation. We went for a grant, received $410,000 for the project. At this point in time, you'll notice some orange stakes in and around the intersection because MoDOT is out gaining right-of-way for the project as we speak, and we hope to let that project in spring, summer of 2020. ST 43, which is a seven-highway project we designed in 2018, and we're currently working on acquiring right-of-way and temporary construction easements to place sidewalk from I-70 to Pink Hill Road on the west side. And at each juncture where there's a traffic signal, we will also make traffic signal upgrades for pedestrian movements. CIP WA 19, which is a water main on South Outer Road, we've had issues with the main that runs from Seven Highway to about where the Nissan dealership is. The soils are acidic, and they have eaten into the pipe and caused numerous breaks in the last few years. We'll be replacing that pipe with a plastic 12-inch man instead of eight, to serve better water pressure and better fire flows, and the plastic is also resistant to any problems with acidic soils. So, should solve the problem there. That's a $1.2 million project, and we look forward to having that hopefully completed in 2021. Wyatt Road, as you know, we had talked about a fire station on Wyatt for Prairie Township, and we've done the design for the widening on the road. That was complete, and then we also installed a water main down the north side of Wyatt Road in preparation for the coming fire station. At this time, we're not sure when they're going to be ready to move on the fire station, but we have our ducks in a row so that we can move quickly when they say they're ready. You'll also note that during 2018, we administered 785 right-of-way permits. These were mostly generated by cable companies and phone companies that were putting fiber optics in the ground, and engineering staff chases down to make sure that the right-of-ways were properly restored, and if there were any issues by homeowners, that we could help them get restitution by the companies that are doing the work. We also revised the Design and Construction Manual, making sure that our specifications are up-to-date with the APWA guidelines and in the best interest of the city. The inspectors, who not only do the inspection for the CIP, they also inspect the subdivisions. And in 2018, there's a list here that you can see of 18 subdivisions and large commercial projects that occurred in the city. During that time, we actually installed $14,200,000 worth of infrastructure, meaning curbs, roads, water mains, sewer mains, storm sewer, traffic, all those items that come to the city, and were dedicated to us by the developers. Pretty picture of Wyatt Road after it was overlaid. We move into operations, and the operations staff is made up of nine specialties. There's the customer service group, the fleet maintenance group, asphalt, the traffic and concrete group, stormwater, sewer collections, sewer treatment, water distribution, water services. We have 47 full-time employees and three seasonal's in 2018. That's 50 people working behind the scenes to provide the services that everyone uses in this city, generally without thought, because you don't think about us until it doesn't work. So, when you get up in the morning and you turn on the water to make your coffee, brush your teeth, take a shower, you flush your toilet, everything works because the staff maintains the system in a good state of readiness. When it doesn't work, we do respond, and we fix those items. So, when we have a water break, our average time to fix a water break in the City of Blue Springs is four hours. So, when you hear that there's water breaks in other cities that may take days or weeks to get repaired, our long time is two days, and that's pretty rare. You kind of look at the assets that we have, just giving you an overview, not listing everything that we own. In 2018, we had 242.9 miles of paved streets. We had 315 streetlights that we owned through the city, that's not counting the 2,500 that are owned by KCPNL. We have 14 traffic signals and 126 miles of a storm pipe buried underground that goes unnoticed. The utilities division has 278 miles of water mains. You might ask, how do we wind up with more miles of water mains than we do streets? Well, that's because we own the water main that feeds into the city from Lee Summit Road, our Kansas City feed line. We own part of the line that comes in from Tri-County, so those miles add into ours. We have 278 miles of sanitary sewer, very similar. We have the Burroque Inceptor that runs up through Burroque Woods to Independence, almost down to Crenshaw Road. So, it's out of our city, but we still own it, and it's our infrastructure. We have wastewater treatment plant, and we have, at that time, we had 21,488 water service connections. Fleet Maintenance was busy maintaining 136 equipment units, meaning bobcats, skid steers, rollers, compacters, jackhammers, all of the above, and 180 vehicles across all the Come down to operations management, and on the management side, we have Jeff Mock, who is our operations manager, and he oversees two assistants, one that's over streets, one that's over utilities, and then the fleet maintenance manager. And then underneath the two assistant operations managers, we have gentlemen who are frontline supervisors that are over the departments or the divisions that we talked about, asphalt, traffic, concrete, water sewer, water services. To give you an idea of what we put into our employees, the street division employees completed a total of 963 and a half hours of training during 2018. We had 20 hours of trenching safety, 56 hours for flagger safety. I know if you talk to our human resources director, that she will tell you that on the loss control side, being a street worker is almost, if not more dangerous than being a police officer, because playing in traffic is not safe. 10 hours of opcom operation training, 6 hours of public operations ag certification, that's for the application of herbicides, and 222 hours of CDL training. On the other side of the world, the utilities division completed 590 hours of training during 2018. They did lab training, public operations ag certification also, trenching safety, flagger safety, chemical spill response, water distribution training and certification, and 127 hours of CDL training. And this will become important when we get back a little bit farther into the presentation. Our customer service group, which is core of two ladies and their supervisor, received and documented 1,297 requests for service. They processed 62,680 work orders in the asset management system. They managed 45 contracts. They generated 52,426 preventive maintenance work orders. So, every time there's a work order for a water valve or a fire hydrant maintenance, those get generated by them, and they get checked off by them at the end. They maintain the city's GIS atlas so that the field staff can know where the water lines, sewer lines, all our infrastructure is at in town, and what the corresponding codes are for each one of those items. They scheduled and coordinated special events, and they manage the city's fuel distribution The asphalt maintenance group, who is one of the favorite groups of the bunch, especially in the spring after snow, responded to 243 requests for service from the public. The vast majority of those were completed within two business days. They repaired 5,728 potholes. That was a light year. They crack sealed 30.3 lane miles of road to keep the water from infiltrating and causing potholes. They swept the arterial routes eight times, and then they swept the entire city once. They also milled and replaced 1,354 square feet of asphalt.
Now, that, 1,354 square feet?
Yes.
I live in a 1,200-square-foot house. That doesn't sound like a whole lot.
Doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you do those transverse cracks across the road, and you're making one stripe and filling those in to take the reverse speed bump out of the street, that's what they typically mill. And I guess, I must admit that...
Chris, if I can, like, those projects, like on South Outer Road, where you did some work, or where we did some work, was that our staff, or was that subcontracted out?
The large patch that's on South Outer just...
You know, where the infrastructure kind of crumbled underneath it?
That was actually where we had a water main break, and the earth was cavitated out from underneath the road.
Oh, okay.
And so, we did the base of the road, and we had the contractor come in with a paver and put a nice smooth patch on top of it, because it's larger than what we typically handle.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
So, we asked them to do that as part of the overlay, and they ducked it in there. It drives better than if we do it by hand, if they do it with a machine. The traffic division responded to 280 requests, 279 requests for service from the public, and this sounds kind of light, but they installed 173 new sign locations, which were predominantly in new subdivisions, replaced 126 signs. In order to replace those 126 signs, they had to go out and inventory and inspect the 2,600 signs that are in the city. So, we found 126 that didn't comply or were vandalized, and replaced those. They repaired 110 signs due to damage or vandalism. The concrete crew, which is also underneath the traffic side, replaced 37,008 square feet of concrete infrastructure.
What does that include?
That includes sidewalks and curbs. And I would like to say that our sidewalk initiative is running strong, but I can tell you right now that we get more calls and requests for curb repairs than we do sidewalks. And unfortunately, the curb repairs can also be trip hazards, and so we've had to address those accordingly. Curbs only being two feet wide but two foot thick, it takes longer and more material to do those than it does a four-foot sidewalk. And then they oversaw 302 outside vendor repairs. The traffic division tends to be kind of the catch-all department, and so not only do they have traffic in concrete, but they also do trees and code violations that we get asked to work with and clean up. So, there's a myriad of little things that they do throughout the year that fills in the time that is beyond what I've talked about. On the stormwater side, there's supervisor and two maintenance workers. They responded to 106 requests for service from the public. Typically, those requests are either a clogged basin or a hole in a yard. So, I'm going to walk out, be mowing the grass in the spring, and all of a sudden, we've had some rain, and now there's a sinkhole in their yard. And so, these gentlemen respond and make the repair to the pipe and restore the yard. In some cases, it's not just repairing the pipe, it's actually excavating and replacing the pipe. They cleaned 429 locations in the storm system. They replaced or secured 22 lids on the storm system. They replaced five storm mains for a total of 716 linear feet. They completed 31 storm main repairs, and they televised 232 storm mains. So, that is where we put a camera down in the pipe and looked to make sure that there's no debris, there's nothing that's restricting the flow, that we've got a full flood. This has become more... This has become more because of the heavy rains that we've had and the system won't keep up in some cases. And so the residents think there's something that's restricting the pipe, we go out and investigate, find out if there is or isn't. We remove it if it is, or we let the people know what we find at the end that it's open.
And Chris, I'm going to assume that this really becomes a bigger problem in the fall?
It does if we have a lot of rain in the fall. If we have a dry fall, it's not too bad, to be honest. More we get the request to respond to leaves in the roadway.
Right.
We have some residents who like to blow their leaves into a nice winrow in the curb line. And we do not provide a leaf pickup service, unfortunately. We don't have a place to take it if we did. So typically, a lot of this comes up in the spring because there are also a faction of the residents who think that the catch basins are yard waste receptacles. And so we have to go out and clean that out. We come to the fleet maintenance group, which there's a supervisor and two mechanics. And as we talk, they have 180 city-owned vehicles to maintain, 136 equipment units to maintain. They did 2,434 in-house repairs, 2,434 in-house repairs by three people. That's 800 repairs a year per person if you just split it out that way. They also sent out 2,101 to outside vendors, which those repairs are larger than the scope that we take on. If there's a transmission problem, an engine failure, a drivability problem that we can't readily diagnose in-house, then we send that out to Ford or to large truck facilities and have them take care of those. Makes more sense for us to focus on what we're good at and let them focus on what they're good at. And they provide round the park, round the clock repair services during snow removal The sewer collection system, we have two crews. We have a crew that actually cleans the water at the treatment plant and then we have a crew that's responsible for getting it from your house to the plant. These are the guys that get it from A to B. They responded to 117 requests for service from the public. These are generally generated by sewer backups in homes where people have a plumber come out and they run a snake down the line and they say, we can't find anything. And then the city goes out and we televise and flush the main in front of their house to determine if there's any blockage on the city's part. 99 times out of 100, the problem's within their line and their plumber's wrong, unfortunately. Fortunately for us, unfortunate for them. They completed 27,512 feet of NCU VCP pipelining, which in the older part of the city, it was built prior to 1975 and they used vitrified clay pipe in that part of the city, which is much like a clay pot that you'd put a flower in. It's very brittle. It cracks and allows root intrusion, allows water to infiltrate into the system, overloading the system when we have heavy rains. By running a sock that's impregnated with resin through it and then it is heat activated with steam, it effectively puts a PVC pipe inside the clay pipe, which takes care of the root intrusion, which takes care of the infiltration of water. So it tightens up the system. We've been doing this for about 13 years now. We've got about five more years and we will have all the clay pipe in the old part of the town treated and sealed. They also completed 186 manhole repairs, which is important because that's where we get a lot of the water into the system when we have heavy rains. It runs in around that and it overfills the sanitary system, which when we put all that water through the system, it goes to the plant and it has to be treated. And so we spend more money in chemicals and process at the plant. So as much as we can dry that up, we can make the plant more efficient. They completed 2,517 feet of root foaming, which is where we put a chemical application down our mains to kill off the roots that intrude into the mains. It also will go back in about three feet into the residents' mains or the service connections and kill the roots in their sewer service. So provides them kind of a double service, if you will. The root killer does not actually kill back far enough to hurt the tree. It just takes care of the roots that are in the system. And then we will also go through and root cut it after they die off to make sure we get that debris out of the system. Which that's the 189,000 feet of root cutting you see next. And then the city of Blue Springs has had, at that time, 28 sewer lift stations, which pump sewer from one basin over the hill into a gravity basin where it can flow on its own to the plant. These pumps run 24/7, 365. They're dependent on to make sure that the sewer stays in the pipes and gets transported where it's supposed to. Some of them are more technical than others. Some of them are a flow ball and a pump and a switch, which those are really nice because you can diagnose those very quickly. Some of them run off of VFDs with computerized programs and are more technical and more difficult to diagnose, but do a much better job and are more efficient on electricity usage. Then we get to the wastewater treatment facility, which is located in Green Valley. I think you've all had an opportunity to take a tour of our plant. It's very well kept, maintained, and it puts out an outstanding effluent. Currently, we're running about 4.6 million gallons through the plant a day on a 10 MGD plant. So would expect nothing less. One of the things that we're proud of is that we retrofitted the plant with ouration equipment that does fine bubble diffusers and we used two innovator blowers, which has reduced the utility costs. It's not by 40 to $50,000, which is a pretty good savings. We have the water distribution system. As you know, we do not make our own water. We buy our water from three different facilities. We buy it from Kansas City, Independence, and Tri County. But once we buy it from them, we have to distribute it through the city. So we have the elevated tank on Adams Street Parkway. We have the elevated tank at Keystone. We have the 5 million gallon reservoir at Pink Hill Park. And then we also have 4.8 million gallons of the tire road tank owned by Tri County.
Chris, what's the distribution between the three sources?
The distribution is, we're under contract for 2.3 from Independence. However, generally, we can exceed that 2.3 because they have extra water to sell and they are the least expensive. Tri County is the second most expensive and on a day, much like today, we're probably pulling 1.2 MGD from them. And then we have to take 1 million gallons from Kansas City because we have a 2 million gallon contract with them.
Okay, so there's a, Kansas City's the most expensive, but there's a minimum we have to take from them?
Yes, and they are also our smallest supplier at this point. We responded 239 requests for service from the public. We repaired 117 water main breaks, performed preventive maintenance on 1,908 of 2,500 hydrants. We exercised 1,064 water valves, which is about half of what's in the system. We actually installed three water mains that totaled about 858 linear feet. And we do installations just for the training of the staff. So in 2018, we replaced the water mains on 17th Street in Old Town. So we increased them from, I believe it was a two inch line to a six inch line to give them better fire flows, give them better pressure in the house, and it just gives our guys some practice to, of actually laying the line itself. We collected 720 water samples throughout the year. Those water samples are tested to make sure that the water that goes into every house in Blue Springs is safe, clean, and meets all the specifications required by MDNR and The water services group, who used to be years ago called the meter readers, no longer really read meters. They're all radio read. And so we use a laptop computer in a truck with a receiver and we drive through the different subdivisions and we collect the reads on a computer. So of that 21,563 water meters, we read those 12 times. We didn't estimate any because the computer was able to do that. The ones that don't show up on the computer, we go back out and hand read. If there's snow on top of them, not a problem. We also do not have the repetitive motion of bending over, pulling a lid, trying to read the meter in a dark dank hole, put it all back together and do that 300 times in a day because that's what we used to do. The staff now goes out and they maintain those meter wells, the rings and lids, the meters and the transmitters, to make sure that all the system works and everything is as it should be. They also work with residents when they call and they say they have an inordinately high water bill, water usage through the roof. Our staff will go out and meet with the residents on site. They will work through different ways that they can determine whether they have a leak or not, dye tablets in the toilet, shutting off everything in the house, watching the leak detect on the meter itself and kind of help them work through trying to find their problem. It's part of the customer service we offer that we're very good at. And of that group, we also have a gentleman who's our utility locator. And so he goes out and he locates all the infrastructure for the city. And he did 6,549 utility locates. And something that I really don't want to talk about, but they're talking about 12 inches of snow just north and west of here today, which they can keep it there, please. Thank you. Our snow removal team is second to none. We do an excellent job of cleaning the streets and we appreciate your support in that effort because we couldn't do it without your support, giving us equipment, materials to make it Just for some quick numbers out of that, the snow removal crews worked 2,384 hours of man-hours in 2018 for snow and we went through 1,858 tons of salt during the night events that year. And in the book, just for reminder sake, it talks about our first, second, and third response for snow, what we do and why we do it. This is the-
Chris, do we still use subcontracting for doing like cul-de-sacs and things like that or?
We only do that if we get over, generally 12 inches, but if we're over eight and we've got another storm backing us up, we might look to do it then.
Okay.
So yes, we do. Every year, we go out with a contingency plan and we contact the contractors and get them onboard, in-line before the season starts so that they're there, we can call them and bring them in.
As a backup, okay.
Yes. We usually try to have at least two pieces of equipment per route, sometimes three. And then that way, we can, they work on cleaning the bubbles of the cul-de-sacs, we do the throats in and out. We're proud that in May, much like the police department has their national night out on crime, we have our Public Works Week, which is our public work showcase. And during the showcase, we get to show off what we do and how we do it. It's great for the public. It's great for the family members that get to come in and see what their loved ones do. If you guys haven't attended, I strongly urge you to come by and visit us. It's generally the week before Memorial Day. We don't do it on National Public Works Week because that is the week before Memorial Day and we have a hard time getting people to come visit us that week. If we go a week earlier, then it works out pretty well. We have many demonstrations on what we do and the equipment, of course, is there and all the people are there to chat with about what they do and how they do it and their training.
I've actually won something at one of those, so.
I was supposed to.
When it comes to department challenges, and this is kind of where we finish up, is with many other departments in the city, we've faced issues with employees headed for greener pastures. Let me roll this up just a little bit. This is, we were talking about the 16, 17, and 18. In 18, we had three retirements, but we also had 13 resignations. The training I was talking about earlier that we do, that we install or that we instill in these employees, makes them attractive to outside agencies and they come courting and the employees wind up going elsewhere. This year, we've had a similar rate. I know that we've had three employees that started in 2019 that have gotten their license and already left. Now, I won't say that all of them left for money. Some of them left to take care of family members. Some of them left because they just decided that public works wasn't their cup of tea. Being on call 1,100 hours a year is not fun when you work 2,000 hours and then you still got your backside time that you could get called at any time, get called away from your family. So I'm not going to place the dampness in any one bucket. It all kind of adds up. If I'm a gentleman who's on call several weeks out of the year, I work and get dirty and hot all day, or I can drive a truck delivering product eight hours a day, stay clean and not worry about my weekends. It's kind of hard to compete sometimes. But with that, I do have to say that, very proud of my crew, what they do, the professionalism that they exude when they're out meeting with public, the customer service compliments that I get. And I can honestly say that compliments versus complaints, I probably get three compliments for every complaint that we get. So with that, your public works department has worked for you day and night, 24/7, 365. I'll stand for questions.
Your honor. If I may, I know I've got Chris on speed dial. And I must say, the customer service that is provided, when there's a question, if there's a problem, his department has always, always, always responded with efficiency and caring of the people that he's dealing with and his department is dealing with. I don't think that we could ask for a better public works department. And I know I tell you this in emails a lot, but you have always been very gracious about making sure things are addressed. And so I think that those kudos are well-earned. I'm concerned about the funding. It's something we're dealing with all the time on the budgeting. So we'll, that's something we need to work on. But thank you very much and to your department also.
Thank you. Your honor.
Councilmember, ditto?
Yes.
Is there another ditto? Unanimous ditto. I do need to take a moment and this is a really pretty document that you can see in front of you. And I can honestly say that I started this project and I do not have the talent for this. However, there's a lady in the operations department who takes many of the phone calls that come in on requests and she has a graphic arts degree. And so we worked with her and she turned out this beautiful product. So I have to give thanks to Julie McGar, who did a very nice job.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Your honor.
Another comment just on this. I guess another thing about this report that I really liked outside of the graphic arts you've mentioned is that almost every sentence has a numeric qualification of what you're trying to communicate. And I really appreciate all the numbers in this report. So you can see that you guys have the technical staff to cover all these bases. And again, thanks for everything you do. Same thing that the council members have said.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Councilmember Fowler, you like analytics, don't you?
Yeah. All right, well, class, tomorrow, there's going to be a test. And I'm going to, the first, I'm going to give you a heads up here. The first question's going to be, how many preventative maintenance items on our hydrants? Okay? Page 17.
Hold back.
So you have a lot of information and the one thing I want to leave you with is every year, it doesn't always happen at the same point in time during the year, but we provide you with annual reports from our departments. You'll get an annual report from our planning department, which comes through the planning commission. You get an annual report from police department- You get an annual report from the police department. This is new. And you get an annual report from the Parks and Recreation Department, talks about their progress, especially as it relates to the sales tax. So there's a lot of information here. The public works department and the police department represent the two largest departments in our workforce. And this is kind of like your insurance company. You don't know that you need it until you need it. The rest of the time, it's invisible to you and you oftentimes take it for granted. And they do a tremendous job, and as Chris said, they are out there working 24/7, 365 days a year to have an individual who's on-call 50% of the time during the year. There's a lot of, lot of stuff going on. And Chris, when is your date for kicking off your snow removal training?
Well, actually, we've already started.
Yep.
Just after the Fall Fun Fest, we did our rodeo.
When am I supposed to be there?
You're supposed to be there, I believe it's November 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
For our training, our training class. I can't say that it will be... The tenure of my employees has gone down, so we've got probably 50% of the line staff or better that have got 18 months or less. And some of those that were here last year didn't have their commercial driver's license yet, so they didn't get to plow. So this will be their first year. So, but we're ready.
So there's a lot going on.
There is.
And when you see on Facebook or social media or some communication wondering, "Well, why is there a public works truck driving down my street with a snowplow on?" That's because we're training and we're getting ready. It's all part of the preparation that leads to the inevitable event that we will have. So Chris, a lot of information here, appreciate it. And the other thing is, you know, I like to say, we hire really good people with a tremendous skill set. So normally, they would say, "Miranda, can you do this for us?" And in this case, Miranda said, "Thank you. You guys just go ahead and do this, okay?" So thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
If I may, also, your honor, these reports to me from each of the departments is so very, very important, and I appreciate getting this one. I have not seen all of these numbers in the past kind of compacted into a report. But these are the sort of things that I like to see when we look at our unfunded list of items for our capital improvements. These are the sort of reports we need to have in front of us when we review that. So again, thank you.
Chris, before you leave, let me get this straight. On November 2nd, you're all going to teach Eric how to drive a snowplow?
No, sir, that is not what I said.
We don't have the insurance for that, do we?
Unfortunately, we would, but Eric does not have his commercial driver's license.
Okay, good enough. Okay, thank you, Chris, for that presentation. It's very informative and certainly gives us a lot to think about. We're going to move on to Merrill Announcements. We're going to go straight to Thostapanda. Tonight comes from Ralph Waldo Emerson, and I quote, "What lies behind us and what lies before us are tiny matters compared to what lies within us." End quote. No business cards, so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Come in.
The second.
Second.
Call in, favor I.
Aye.
Both same sand, motion carries. Re-adjourn.